All right, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. City Attorney, any reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The council convened to discuss two items in closed sessions listed on the agenda. They provided direction, but there is no action reportable pursuant to the Brown Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Call the meeting in order. Madam Clerk may have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
I need my mic on.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Next agenda item, please join us, silent prayer and flag salute. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, pre- place statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cablecast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Saturday, September 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, September 8th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next agenda item E, council, any agenda approval, addition or deletion. F is none. The next agenda item is F, presentation. There is no presentation. Our next agenda item G, Madam Clerk may have a public comment, please.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. We have Alexander Hampton.
I am a field representative for the NorCal carpenters out of Local 46, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. This evening, I'm going to address some of the worries about the hard-working men and women that are building projects all around this area, especially in Galt. There's a major problem that's going on. Workers lacking healthcare, being misclassified. They might be amazing, but they're doing carpenter work, getting underpaid. A lot of that's going on, like I said, not just here in Galt, but in Northern California, period. It's a huge problem. To help eliminate this problem, we need responsible contractors. Contractors that are going to take care of the workers that are doing that hard work out there in the sun in all types of, different types of weather out there. As myself, as a carpenter, I feel that, you know, if a person's doing the same work as me, they should be getting paid like me. You know, it's just straight fair. It's common sense. So, again, to eliminate this problem, we need to make sure that prevailing wage, healthcare, apprenticeship, compliance, local hire is required in future housing projects here in Galt. As leaders of the community, what are we going to do to work towards this goal? We need to work together, for one. And thank you very much for this time allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Thank you for your comment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a comment real quick?
Yes, sure.
I was just curious, in regards to that, when we qualify, we do a back, when we hire a contractor, we have a thing where it says, this is a qualified contractor, right? There's background that we do. What does, what does that background entail? That they don't have any liens or?
Correct. Yes. So, yeah, every project, all of our projects, we're required to pay a prevailing wage, and those are set by the state. And there are other projects, such as C Street, where we're not only required to pay prevailing wage, we're also required to pay Davis Bacon, and those are federal prevailing wage, so whatever is higher, we pay. Part of our bid evaluation process is to look into the background, make sure there's no safety actions, there's no issues with their bonds or their insurance, and that there's no claims against contractors. So, we do, a background check gets identified in our bid procedure process.
So, claims against contractor, if there was like a suit filed for labor, unfair labor practices, I'm just making that up, right? That would show up, right?
If it's, and I'll look to the city here, if it's reported on the DIR website, that's something that we would identify.
Okay. Yes, yes. Just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Very good, Mr. Farmer. I would also encourage the public speaker, if you would take some time, look back at the public documents, at the contracts that are brought before us and the public, you would see it, you know, generally considered boilerplate documents, but there's many provisions in there to make sure that the citizens' dollars are spent well and to the standards that he mentioned, but I appreciate your public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is a report by city council member or regional board committee and commission. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yes, I just have two things. First of all, with the SAICOG, I attended on August 26th, the Strategic Planning Committee meeting. We discussed many items, including the blueprint document moving forward and how that's going to be rolled out next year with some real process of figuring out how to implement from a policy level, and then also a process in which onboarding happens for new board members. It looks like there will be at least five of the 28 board members turning over next year, so we thought it was real important to talk about how the new board members would be onboarded, as well as briefed on all of the funding sources, both federal, state, competitive and non-competitive, and then the processes in which money is distributed. And so, that happened on the 26th, and then the California Council of Governments Board that I serve on is also kind of going through the legislation that's in the process now, looking at it and determining what actions to take between now and the end of the session, the true session, and then preparing the CEO's annual review. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Papino.
I don't have anything tonight.
Councilmember Farmer.
I don't have any official meetings, but city-related, I just want to mention that I did attend the Parks and Rec Forum, and it was pretty well-attended. I was very happy with the turnout, and also the gray wall reed laying, and it was a very nice ceremony as well, so I just wanted to mention those two. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor Sandu. I attended the Sacramento Metro Air District Board. There was three people online, and we did not achieve a quorum until about a half hour, 45 minutes into the meeting. They kept stretching it out, but we did achieve votes on everything necessary. They discussed SAC City School District consented, which they increased by a small percentage. An update on Bill 617, Community Air Project, and file updates on district headquarters. You know, they weren't fancy items, but nothing happens if they don't get approved. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Myself, nothing to report tonight. Our next agenda item I, information consent calendar. It is recommended that item 1 through 8 be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or an action is requested by a council member. Any council member want to pull any item from consent calendar?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item I-6, just for a comment.
Which one?
I-6.
I-6. You just want to make a comment?
I just want to make a comment on it.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Okay. So, I-6 is an item that the council will be voting on whether or not to approve, support Proposition 36, and I won't go into great detail. I talked about it last meeting, and certainly I think our community is beginning to be well-aware of it. Prop 36 is a proposition that's on the ballot. It's a citizen initiative that will help begin to correct some of the things that happened, the outcomes of Proposition 47, which was approved by the voters in 2014. And I will just read a little snippet of what I believe that it will do, as well as the proponents. Prop 36 creates effective tools to hold individuals accountable for repeat retail theft and fentanyl trafficking while incentivizing treatments for those suffering from addiction to hard drugs. I think our community over the last several years, certainly, but has had to deal with many of these same issues, and I would hope that, and I think we will, see some progress in that area. And the tools will be given to law enforcement through this, as well as the district attorney's office and judges that hear cases, and so I would encourage my colleagues to support this.
Thank you. Madam Clerk may have read that item 1 through 8 on the consent calendar.
Receive and file warrants for a period ending August 21st, 2024, minutes of the regular meeting of August 20th, 2024, treasurers report for a period ending July, 2024, public educational and governmental fee funding, approval of personnel manual updates, support of Proposition 36, approval of salary schedule corrections, and approval of the Galt Public Service Unit side letter for on-call and standby pay.
Thank you. Any public comment on consent calendar?
No comment.
There is no public comment, and I will move the consent calendar as approved.
Second.
And it's moved by the mayor, second by the vice mayor. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Our next agenda item J, schedule matter notice of public hearing.
No.
Thank you. Our next agenda item K, regular calendar. K1, city treasurer's report. Treasurer report for period ending June 2024. Mr. Farrell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, before you have you tonight, is the treasurer's report ending June 2024. But of course, before I start off with that, I always want to give an economic report. So, according to the EDD website, there are 11,900 total people who are in the labor force here in the city, and according to them, it's 11,200 are employed, which they're saying that 5.7% is the unemployment rate here in Galt. In comparison, the county of Sacramento falls at 5.3%. Now, with that, I'll also go into what everyone is usually interested in is housing here in Galt. And so, for the, I have both statistics for July and for August, so I'm going to throw out a bunch of numbers, and you can pick up or whatever you wish. So, in the month of July, here in Galt, 31 homes sold. The listing price was 569,000. The closed sale price was 572,000. That's the median price. So, just a touch above asking prices, actually, what those 31 homes sold for. If you do the math, it comes out to $335 per square foot. Okay? And 21 of those 31 homes sold within 60 days. Okay? That's for July. For the month of August, 29 homes sold, and the median listing price was about $570,000. The closed sales price was about $580,000. So, during the month of August, it was $10,000 above that, and again, the price per square foot was $315 per square foot. So, and I can, I saw this firsthand. I live in a six-house cul-de-sac, and one of those houses went up for sale in August, on a Thursday, and they were going to hold an open house on Saturday, Sunday. So, as soon as that house went up for sale, immediately, there was already an offer on the home. Open house was, three more offers were made on that home. So, the sellers certainly had their choice. The asking price was 545,000, and the home sold for 560,000. So, it is, that's exactly what happens. Right now, the housing market is tight. So, I'll get into the, my treasurer's report for June, and I'll just get right to it. This is the time, the one time a year where I can say, you know, exactly how much interest that the city earned. And last time I was here, I said, "Well, we're going to earn, you know, definitely over $3 million in interest." And I knew that we were going to hit that, and we were going to surpass it by a lot. And, but, I have the final total for this year, and again, I always preface this by saying, you know, this money does not all go in one place. It does not all go in the general fund. It's split among 52 different sub-accounts. So, the final total was $3,969,753.33. So, we're about $30,000 short of $4 million in interest this past fiscal year. Now, I'm sure your very first question is, are you going to do this again? You know, can we get a $4 million in interest? And the answer is no. Okay? And the reason I say that is because we already know, and it's no secret, that the Federal Reserve is going to start lowering rates. As a matter of fact, you're going to see the first decrease of, on February the 18th, which is a Wednesday. And the question is, how much of a decrease? It could be a quarter percent, could be a half percent. We're definitely going to see a quarter, and it's probably about 50/50 as far as whether we're going to see a half. I personally think we're only going to see a quarter. Now, I'll give you kind of, again, another live example as far as how interest rates are already decreasing. On June 13th, I bought a six-month treasury for 5.31%. If I tried to buy that same treasury today, again, no interest rate decreases yet by the Fed, but if I tried to buy that same six-month treasury today, 4.82%. Okay? Again, my second example, I bought a one-year treasury on June 25th. Okay? I got 5.10. Today, 4.36. So, the financial markets are already putting in that, those rate decreases. And so, the short answer to that is, because of those rate decreases, that's why this, what we earned in interest this past year, almost $4 million, we're not going to see that again this year. My guess for this time next fiscal year, I'm probably guessing about $3.35 million. So, put down a sticky, put it on your refrigerator for the year. So, I'll answer any questions the council may have, but that's all I have here tonight.
Counsel.
I ask for your approval.
Thank you, Sean. You know, I always appreciate your, that was actually some friends of mine's, it was their mother's house that sold across from you.
Mm-hmm.
So, banks can just, anticipating a rate cut, they can just say, "Oh, we're going to start lowering what we're offering to people," and then everybody just kind of falls to it? Because you mentioned that one decrease was like almost a whole percent.
Mm-hmm.
And they did that without any change?
Yeah, no rate has changed yet, but the speculators are saying, "Well, we're going to see that much of a decrease." And this decrease was, yeah, it was about 80 basis points. So, in one year's time, they're predicting, financial markets are predicting, that we're going to see, say, 3/4 to 1 full percent a year from now. Now, in my personal feeling is, we're probably going to see a 1% decrease probably by the end of January from today, okay, as far as the federal funds rates. By the end of June, I don't know, maybe a half percent more. I'm not sure. It just depends between now and January, how much, you know, what the unemployment numbers are coming at and what the inflation numbers coming at. And that's how the Fed pretty much judges what they're going to do.
So, last question is, you've been treasurer for how many years now? I forget.
I'm in my 34th year.
34th year. I didn't mean to date you right now.
That's okay. I started when I was 32, and I had hair. Okay? All right.
With that, the reason I ask that is because, I mean, do you think in that time, we've ever made that kind of interest?
Never. Only one year that we ever made over $2 million, and that was, I want to think that was like '07, '08 timeframe. That's $2 million, and now we're at $4 million, for two reasons. One is, we have a little bit more money, right, that we just, you know, it's allocated, but just haven't spent, and two, higher interest rates. And that's, there's no secret to that.
And I mean, and I just want to say to the publics watching, I mean, we're happy that the city, we're happy that taxpayer dollars have been able to be invested wisely, thanks to yourself, and make that kind of interest, which is basically, like you said, unprecedented and probably will never repeat, you know, anytime soon. But we also know that the reason that is because inflation is so high and rates are high, which makes it hard on the common person. So, there's like a, there's like, you know, a dark cloud, a silver lining to everything, but, which is, you know, I will be glad to see rates come down and see that the general population can start seeing some relief on that, I think.
True. When the rates come down, as a consumer, you're going to see, like, say, mortgage rates come down as well. And so, if you're on the fence, let's say, buying a house or possibly even refinancing, if you originally bought at a high rate, you're going to see that, you know, hopefully, that mortgage activity pick up.
So, one last thing, I'm sorry to drag this out, this is interesting. So, what I think is strange, though, is how, and I've talked to a lot of my realtor friends, is how prices in Galt have stayed so strong and even went up with rates as high as they were. You think that, well, people aren't going to be able to afford to buy houses with rates so high and the prices so high, how can you do it? But yet, I think it's a supply issue in Galt. There's just not a lot of supply. People are sitting on a lot of incredibly low interest rates, and so, nobody wants to sell their houses and give up those spectacular rates, and so, the supply stays small. So, with that being said, if rates start coming down, I don't really foresee prices going down because it'll make people be able to afford these houses even more because now they're going to, the rates are going to be down, so prices are probably going to still stay where they're at or maybe even tick up.
Totally agree. Absolutely. You said it very well.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean. Any other council member, any other comment?
Just thank you for all the work. Thank you for collecting a fat paycheck. Everybody will appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Thank you. Now, I'm looking to approve the Treasury Report for this period.
So, moved.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Our next agenda item is K2, City Council Report. Subject, City Council Public Benefit Funding. Ms. Hubert.
So, at the last council meeting, Councilmember Papino asked to bring his public benefits amount forward, and so, the recommendation is to approve by motion, allocating his allotted $1,000 to the City of Galt Parks and Recreation Scholarship Program. Did you have any words, or?
No, I don't think so. I think we discussed it at length last time, so.
Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item?
No public comment.
Then I'll move to approve it. Second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Papino, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Thank you. Our next agenda item K3, subject, Measure R Independent Citizen Oversight Committee Appointment. Ms. Hubert.
So, the recommendation is to review and consider appointment by roll call vote, an application to the vacant position on the Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, with a term ending April 2027. The prior two committee members whose terms ended April 2024 chose not to reapply, and Rob Bowles was appointed on July 16th, 2024, leaving one vacancy, and Gabriel Gutierrez submitted application on August 20th, and he does meet the required qualification. So, I don't know if he's in the audience, but the application was submitted, so you could review it.
All right. Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item?
No public comment.
If it's not, then I was looking to motion to appoint Gabriel.
Moved.
It's moved by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Farmer. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Thank you. Our next agenda item K4, Public Work Department. Subject, Corollian Deep Well Project, CIP 521A Engineering Service Contract Award. Mr. Griffin.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, councilmembers, John Griffin, Director of Public Works. I will provide a very brief report on the Corollian Deep Well Project. Also in attendance here tonight supporting me is Trung Trin, our Deputy Director of Public Works and City Engineer, and Sean Speth, who's Principal Hydrogeologist with Wood Rogers. Just to recap, staff recommendation, we recommend adopting a resolution, authorize the interim city manager to execute a consultant services agreement with Wood Rogers in the amount of $1,481,379 for the Corollian Deep Well Project, authorizing a contingency of $148,621 for unanticipated costs, and three, authorizing the Public Works Director to execute contract amendments within the approved contingency. I just, next, a very brief summary of our water system. Our water system currently consists of eight wells, four of which are currently active, and a, and our fifth is on standby. So, during the summer months, those two deep wells, which are our primary wells, those run 24 hours a day. The Monterey Bay well runs about 12 hours a day, and the River Oaks well runs about eight hours a day during the peak summertime, and like, and it'll run eight hours plus a day this week with the warm weather. So, this project will construct a new well that will replace the existing Corollian well, which failed earlier this year. It will also improve the existing water plant, and it will construct a new $1.5 million water storage reservoir. This new well will be constructed in a deeper aquifer with better water quality that will allow the city to eliminate the arsenic treatment system at the Corollian Water Keemo Plant. So, this item was before council at the July 16th council meeting. As directed by council, staff and Wood Rogers team provide As directed by council, staff and Wood Rogers team provided a presentation to the Consumerless Groundwater Authority on August 7. Uh, that PowerPoint that, uh, from the presentation that we provided is attached to the staff report. As discussed in the staff report, the CGA is critical of the city's growth and impacts on groundwater. Uh, nevertheless, this project is integral to provide for redundancy in the city's water system. Uh, there is no redundancy should one of our four wells fails. Uh, as we committed to the, the CGA, commit again here, staff commits to involve the CGA in the environmental sequo process and attend future CGA meetings to provide updates on all city projects that have the potential to impact groundwater. So, uh, in conclusion, that wrap up, wraps up my report, and the project team is here and available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Uh, council member, anyone want any comment or any discussion?
I just have a couple, I just have a couple of questions, John. I'm looking at the project cost breakdown, and it starts with the preliminary and it goes down to the contingency, 1.630, including the contingency, so that, so this is, so this is just for Wood Rogers to oversee the construction, this is not the actual construction?
This is both for the design and construction of a test well. What we do on a project like this is we construct the test well just to confirm what water, confirm the water quality that we expect to encounter is actually there. We'd hate to go spend four, five, six million dollars on a project and then find out, "Uh-oh, that water's not of high quality as we expect." So, part of this cost is to construct the test well and collect some samples just to verify, uh, the high water quality before we go to that next step of building, uh, the well, building the water treatment plant and building the reservoir.
Okay, because, yeah, that's what I was confused on, it mentioned, so, the staff report, what it mentions is the construction of the, of the temporary well, to, the test well. Okay, right, okay. So, so the, we won't know to the, what the full construction cost is until, so, what's the timeline here? We, Wood Rogers does that, we test the water, if it comes back good and says, "Yes, we're going to get what we hope for." Then will we go out to RFP to actually build the actual well then, will that come back to us, that whole process then? Or where we, where do we go from here?
Yes, so, the next steps, uh, with tonight, we're presuming that we encounter very good water quality. Tonight, we will, that also allows us to authorize a contract with Wood Rogers to move forward with full design of all those improvements. And then, uh, that process will likely take roughly a year, and hopefully this time next year, we're out to bid on a new well and improvements to the water treatment plant and a new reservoir.
How long, and so, so theoretically, we would, a year from now, you said this time next year, so then, how long construction do you think? I'm just, with, trying to figure out how long until the actual new well, given that it, we find what we were looking for, how long until that well could be online?
I would expect this project from, if we award tonight, would be two years before we are complete with construction.
And you're saying right now, we have no redundancy if should one of our wells go down?
We have no redundancy should whatever wells go down. We have another project that is currently in design for another well, but that will not be online until the end of next year.
Okay, and you also mentioned a minute ago that one of the main reasons we're doing this is because the main Carrillion, the one located at DiMaggio, someone we're talking about, that's no longer meeting the arsenic level testing? Can you explain that a little more?
That well actually failed, and so, it is, the, uh, talk to contractors and the cost to rehabilitate is pretty substantial. And it would, in our opinion, it would not be a good use of tack, of our rate payer funds to rehabilitate this well, it would be much more cost effective to construct this new well.
Okay, so, in layman's terms, what does that mean by failing the arsenic? Does that mean that we no longer, are we trading the, explain that to me?
Our water system meets all standards, and at, so, the well, the, the well itself has failed, so the, um, the column, the material has collapsed, so that we can't extract water from that well.
You're not, so you, when you fail, you say fail, you don't mean fail the arsenic test?
Correct.
Fail, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to clarify. Because it came off to me like we were failing, you know, like it wasn't meeting the criteria, now we have to build another well. So, how long are we going to be using bad, okay?
Yep.
Um, so, the new well will go into a new aquifer, hypothetically, the one we're looking for?
Yes.
There's been a lot of talk about, and I don't want to get into a different subject, but maybe this could be for, maybe we can talk about this more in depth, but I get a lot of people that come to me that say, you know, "Why does the county or the state, whoever that mandates, you know, water rationing, water meters, you know, you know, like the people of Galt, you're only supposed to water your lawns on this day and this day and this day." But yet, we just keep building more houses, which demand more water and so on? I mean, is it just, is that just irony there, or?
Yep, it is, and, I mean, I think Sean brought it up, we're, you know, there's constant demand for new homes. And there's a demand for, for more homes here in town.
And, uh, and just last thing, and I'll let one of my colleagues go. There is a lot of talk lately about people's, you know, with the, the regular CPI increases that we see in people's water bills and stuff, you know, when that happens, we see a lot of chatter in the community about that. There's a perception that, that when new homes come online, that the people of Galt, we get, we all get a rate jump on our bill because we're paying for their new houses. That's not true, I mean, new houses, all new development pays for itself with things like this.
Every new, uh, home or every new permit connection, they pay a, a number of impact fees, water, sewer, parks, transportation, measure A, uh, so, yes, they all would pay their fair share. And then, those funds go pay, go towards paying for any new construction that would expand capacity.
Okay. All right, thank you, John, I think that's all I have right at the moment.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council member?
I, I just have a comment, uh, appreciate the work of staff to work with the CGA, um, on this. The, uh, I know we had a meeting kind of offline, uh, with members of that group shortly after our last meeting that we had this subject. Um, so, I appreciate you taking the time and the commitment to engage, uh, on projects moving forward as well as making a presentation at, uh, CGA, um, and, uh, and keeping them in the loop because I think that's, that's an important piece, and I think we found some other information in there in talking to them that can help move us forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member, any comment?
Worth clarifying, the Parlin Oaks subdivision, which is almost adjacent to the well, correct?
Yes.
And they're paying, uh, just shy of $1.7 million in lieu of water capacity fees?
Correct.
And 100% of that will go to fund what we're talking about tonight.
Yes, what we are doing with, we, instead of using, uh, the money that's currently programmed in this project, we're going to use that money, those funds instead. Uh, anytime money is pending to skip or an equivalent program, there's a very narrow timeframe that we have to use those funds. So, we don't want to lose those funds, so we're going to expend those first and utilize what's currently programmed, uh, for later phases during construction.
Great, thank you.
I, I do have one last question, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
May. Uh, so, this particular well that's failed that we're going to replace, it says it was built in 89, is that what, 88? What did it say on the?
Yes, yeah, late 80s, early 90s.
So, what is that, 40 years, almost 40 years?
35, yeah.
Okay, so, do we, I mean, you may don't have this answer for me now, but I'm just curious, maybe later time you could email me or something, or email the council, but the other wells that we have, what is the, do you know what the age of those wells are? Is this one of our older wells, is this one of our newer wells?
Uh, the four wells, the, I'm going to go off memory here, the two deep wells are probably less than 10 years, 10 years old.
Okay.
Um, the other wells are, River Oaks is 15 years old.
None of them is old as this well, then?
None of them rolls this well, uh, the golden, our standby well, which is the Golden Heights Well, that one's probably as old, but that one is not one of our four primary wells.
Okay, I'm just curious of what to expect as far as, you know, if this is going to happen again in a couple of years or whatever, but probably not likely.
I would really hope, yeah, this, I would really hope this is not going to happen in the very near future.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, John, for your report, thank you for your hard work, your step. Uh, the only thing, can you might be explain in a brief, I know I, I read in the report to explain to the public, uh, we're going to, uh, I think Wood Roger, can I do that job is around more than half, one and a half million, right? And what, why the reason we picking them?
Yes.
To, to do the job? Can you might be a little bit brief to the public?
Of course, Mayor. So, yes, so, uh, at the start of the project, we issued what's called a request for proposals, and those were sent out to a number of engineering firms and asking them to propose on the project. And the staff report identified how many we received, I don't remember exactly how many, but, uh, and there was a review panel of city staff that reviewed all the proposals received, and we deemed that Wood Rogers was the most qualified. So, there is a, uh, there's a review process that is, um, comprehensive, and, uh, we, we select who we believe is the team that's best qualified to, uh, to give us a, a product that will help us get to the finish line and is the most qualified to perform that work.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to move to the public comment, uh, any public comment on this agenda item, K4?
No public comment.
There is no public comment, and now I'm looking to approve, uh, looking to have a motion to approve the item number K4.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Councilmember Vandenberg, and second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by five to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item is L Communication.
Uh, none.
Thank you. Uh, next agenda item, M, City Clerk's Report. Subject: Lead of California Cities Conference Designation of Voting Delegate. Ms. Hubert?
So, the recommendation is to appoint a city council member voting delegate and up to two alternates if desired at the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo, October 16 through October 18, 2024. Um, Vice Mayor Lozano had requested to attend the conference a while back, and since the time of agenda posting, Mayor Sandu has also registered to attend the conference. So, city council can nominate one voting delegate and one, uh, alternate.
I would like to nominate Vice, Vice Mayor Lozano for the delegate, and if there is nobody wants on the alternate, I may be the alternate.
Is that the motion?
Yes.
So moved.
There you go.
Okay, moved by the mayor, and second by Councilmember Papino. Um, before I make the motion, I would like to ask, uh, any public comment on this agenda item?
No public comment.
Thank you.
So, you, I'm sorry, you made the motion, not, the mayor made the motion, or?
Yes, the mayor made the motion, Mr. Papino.
Papino's second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by five to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item, Comments by Staff. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Interim Community Development Director Mendez?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I have quite a few things to update, um, you guys on, I haven't been here in a while, so, bear with me. Um, I briefly wanted to mention, some of you know that Genesis Allegria, she's our community engagement analyst, um, is out on maternity leave, um, which was expected, but she left us a little earlier than planned, so, I've been busy training, um, somebody we have helping us for the next couple of months, she's actually a resident here, her name is Myrna Gold, and she will be, um, helping us with the newsletter and with social media. She's working with me right now on a campaign for C Street that I'll touch on in just a minute. So, Myrna is, um, here, kind of coming up to speed, um, and so, she'll be helping over the next couple of months while Genesis is out. Also, on that staffing front, um, I wanted to let everybody know that we have a new building official that will be starting on Monday. Many of you are aware that Zach Carver had, um, resigned back in July, and so, we held a recruitment, and actually, a former building inspector that used to work with the City of Galt, his name is Ross Lovato, he is returning. He is, um, now has been working the last, since he left Galt, I guess, has been working with the City of Sacramento as a supervising building inspector, so, he's returning to Galt. Has a great reputation with staff, also in the community, so, we're excited to have him back. He will be, um, starting on Monday, September the 9th. And speaking on, um, the housing front, I know that there's been lots of talks tonight with Sean regarding housing. Um, we, being over in community development, I can tell you right now that, um, there is definitely a pent-up demand for housing, and these builders know it. We have a handful of builders that we're working with right now. The Planning Commission just approved architecture at the meeting in August for Meritage. They're going to be the first builder out at the Liberty Ranch Development. Meritage has three villages that the, um, they'll be building. They received approval, they are submitting tomorrow their architecture and their building plans, and so, they would like to be under construction in November, and so, you'll see lots happening out there. You also have mentioned, I know Councilmember Papino had mentioned, um, Parlin Oaks. Parlin is moving rather quickly out there. Um, Lennar, which is constructing at Greenwood Cottages, is, uh, I feel like we can't get permits out fast enough for these guys. They know that there is, um, demand out there, and once the interest rates drop, I think that they want to be ready to go. And so, um, it's exciting, I think that, uh, we'll see, um, a lot happening in all of the developments that have been approved by city council and planning commission over the years. Um, I, I think that we have builders lined up for every one of them, so, um, more to come on that front. Lastly, I wanted to touch on the C Street project. I'm not sure if, um, the Public Works Director is going to mention this, anything about C Street, but as many of you know, it's tore up right now. Um, we still have traffic controls in place, and so, we've heard some concern from the merchants, um, along the C Street corridor, actually throughout kind of the Old Town area. And so, tomorrow, we are launching a shop local campaign. It is called Shop, Drink, and Eat on C Street, and so, we will be, um, advertising on social media, encouraging residents to shop in the construction area and kind of throughout the, um, Old Town area, and not to forget about our merchants, although that they are a little difficult to reach right now. Um, you know, they are still in business and open and operating, and so, we'll be giving out totes, um, C Street kind of branded totes, canvas totes, working with the Chamber, actually, to anybody who collects 15 receipts in the shopping district. They can turn that in for a branded C Street, um, shopping tote, and then, they are entered into a drawing for, I think we ordered 20, um, custom Stanleys that have the C Street logo on them, and so, um, there'll be a drawing for that in December when hopefully construction, um, is near completion and the roadway is back open. So, we are working with our merchants, we're adding additional signage out there, specifically for the Galt Furniture Little Caesar's Shopping Center. I think that they have been hit hard because all of their access is pretty much cut off unless you come through, um, A Street. So, we are working with them on some additional signage at A Street and potentially Lincoln. But that campaign launches tomorrow, we've reached out to all of the businesses for any specials or coupons or advertisements they want to push out. Um, we're going to do that through this campaign. We also will be highlighting and spotlighting individual, um, restaurants and retailers through the program over the next couple of months, so, please share that information and as you see it on our social media. We've encouraged all the merchants to share as well, and so, um, that branded campaign will start tomorrow. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Public Works Director Griffin?
I have a couple of things to report on, uh, making sure you're still here in the audience. So, first, I want to recognize Trung Trinh, who has accepted a promotion to become the city's new Deputy Director of Public Works and City Engineer. Trung's been working with the...
Trung's been working with the city for approximately 18 years. He's been integral and delivering a number of critical infrastructure projects. Staying on C Street, he is currently managing the C Street Complete Streets project. So please join me in congratulating Trung on his promotion. Second, talking about prod, critical infrastructure projects, an update on the Gore Aquatic Center Pool Slide project. We expect to be advertising for construction bids later this month. And our goal is to present a staff report for award of a construction contract in November. The bad news is information we're hearing from the manufacturers of the pool slide, or the manufacturer of the pool slide, is that fabrication will likely not be complete until after Memorial Day. So that means there's a very high likelihood that the pool slide is not operational until the end of the next aquatic season. So we had been mentioning before, we were hoping to be online between Memorial Day and 4th of July. That does not look favorable right now. And then just quickly touch on C Street. As Amy mentioned, you know, a lot is going on. And we've had truckload after truckload after truckload of dirt moved. And it's good to see George Reed really getting things moving. And that's all I have.
I have a couple of things, Mayor and council. Just a heads up that the Saturday market coming up will include a public safety fair. So there will be demonstrations by fire, CST Fire, and Galt's finest, Galt PD. And also a heads up, next week, I will not be in the office. I'll be on vacation. Interim Community Development Director Amy Mendez will be in charge in my absence. But I will be back in about a week and a half. And that's, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next agenda item O, comments by city council member, future agenda item, Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I just wanted to report that I've had, I don't know, four or five meetings with the interim city manager involved in the last couple of weeks and meeting with constituents and different opportunities for the city. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Papino?
Sean already mentioned the first outreach for the Park and Rec Master Plan. I got there for the first half of it and was pretty impressed by the turnout. And the kind of laying the groundwork, definitely no shortage of feedback being received while I was there. And they hadn't even got to the parts with the big pads of paper yet. So that was good. And then as always, a great memorial for Officer Greewall. So excellent job, chief in the department. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things, and some of these are actually questions. So maybe as to what you mentioned, Ms. Mendez, about the shop local. And I, I know you've updated me on that and I'm glad it's finally starting. So I think the important thing on that is, I appreciate the thing you're doing with the receipts and all that too. But just us featuring businesses on social media and passing specials along and whatever they can, criteria they can give us is going to be the number one thing that those people are going to like to see. On an up note, I have been visiting that very plaza that you mentioned quite frequently just to see different times of day when I get off work around 2:30. And I went up there one evening to see, and pleasantly surprised, I saw about 74 cars in the parking lot one night, which was, I was a little surprised by how many were in there. So it looks to be, you know, people seem to be visiting that plaza. I want to say thanks to our city manager. I brought up an issue that I saw with the crosswalk in A Street by the time school got out. So Chris went over there today and viewed it for himself firsthand. So I appreciate you doing that. And that's one of the things that I appreciate, Chris, is when we have an issue with something that you, you know, jump right on it and take a look at it, you know, just blow it off as, you know, it's not important. So looked at that issue. This is a little bit of a bottleneck there and some, some things. But people are definitely visiting that plaza. And hopefully I ask people who are watching to continue to do that because it will be important to keep shopping local. So my other question, maybe you can help me with, John, there has been some concern in town because I know we had, you know, Semahorn Road shut down, which was unexpected. I mean, we, we expected it at some point, but it's just things are kind of happening at the same time. So that's shut down for a month and then we got to C Street. And even though they're not next to each other, so I don't think they impact each other a whole lot. But with that said, you know, Amy's comments started making me think, you know, we got, we got, you know, some construction going on in Marengo over there. I've heard today from a lady came in my shop, said she hears jackhammering over there all the time because she lives right up against, on the backside of where Marengo is. And so they're doing stuff on Marengo. And then we got Summerfield. So what I'm concerned about, and I just want to keep this in mind moving forward, is is there going to be any significant construction that's going to be as a result of Summerfield? Are they going to, are we, are we going to see in like three months from now, the Summerfield project like block off Marengo and say, oh, we got to do something on the road? Because I'm concerned about with all these projects moving forward at the same time. And it seems like that's what's going on. They're all kind of coming, it's like a perfect storm, that we're going to start seeing all these unintended things where we have this be blocked or this be blocked. And people are, I mean, there's a lot of chatter about it already that, I mean, there's actually memes going around online that says, you know, people are like, see that area where there was no construction? Let's go ahead and block that street right now too. I mean, they're just poking fun. But that's what people are saying because they're talking about it. So I just want to be, you know, keep in touch with our contractors so we don't get blindsided by, oh, hey, we're going to close the road for two months or something, you know? If we can know about that kind of stuff would be helpful, just so we can get in front of it. And I think with that, just, everybody, please be patient with the construction. We knew that, you know, we're going to see some results from that. But I've spoken to some business owners. They've said that, you know, yeah, it's a little bit of inconvenience, but it's okay, we're getting through it. And they're, one of them is right in the middle of it. So I want to thank you for those people's patience. And of course, if they have any issues, they know they can reach out to staff and we'll go talk to them or figure out what their issue is. And I think that's pretty much it. So thank you, Chris. Thank you, Amy. John, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Benenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to staff for the reports. Thank you for all the flexibility on C Street. I popped in the other day and it was nice to see a lot of the material being removed off that street. So it'll be much lower than it was before and it'll look pretty normal. It is usually an inconvenience right in the middle of town, but I think people will be pleasantly, pleasantly surprised when they're all done. I also attended the wreath laying. It was very well attended. And it was, it was just, it was sad and heartwarming at the same time. So my heart goes out to the family. Mr. Lozano, thank you for bringing the Prop 36 item. I think it's a very good trend to see in California. Happy to support that. And then finally, I went to church this weekend. And during that service, there was discussion of the Sunshine Food Pantry. So in 2019, they served 12,392 people. In 2021, that number jumped to 17,956. Now in July of '23, from January through July, that number was 13,0747. This year, between, in 2024, between January and July, that number has jumped to 20,030. So there's a serious need and there's, even though the economy does have some hopes, there's some cracks in the surface, I guess. We're very lucky to have people that dedicated in the hours they put in tirelessly to feed so many people every single day when they show up, when they have events. It's, it's truly a beautiful thing. So having said that, I would like to send my public benefit funds to the Sunshine Food Pantry. Got all that? That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ben, myself, thank you for the staff, hardworking, city manager and his staff doing very hard work. You know, we are during the construction. And we all know, all the project have to finish, have to go as soon as possible. And that's why we, everybody asking the public be patient. If anything, any concern, call to the Public Work Department, call to city manager or call my office. And we will do the best we can do. And I also like to thank you, any public comment. Public comment is very important for me, or I believe every council member, very important to us. Thank you for the citizens come to the chamber for this meeting. Thank you for everybody. And I also like to congratulate Trung as a deputy, Public Work Department deputy. He was working very hard. He was working the city from long. Thank you. And if anybody have any question, if he's not, then I'm going to adjourn that meeting almost 7 o'clock. Thank you. Have a good night.